I will order the meeting of the Greenwood Common Council on Wednesday, February the 22nd. If you would please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance. After the pledge, please remain standing. We'll be led in prayer this evening by Mark Wiley, the Executive Pastor, Redeemer Bible Church.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Heavenly Father, Lord, you are the sovereign God of the universe, and yet you hear us when we call to you, Lord. And so, you, Lord, are aware and you care about even the details of our council meeting. And so tonight, Lord, I pray to you, for these members of this council, I pray that you would grant them wisdom and discernment, Lord, that you would encourage them in their calling to serve in this way, what is oftentimes upshored seemingly thankless. Thank you, Father, that we live in a community where we can have something like this, where citizens serve citizens. And, Lord, may we never take that lightly, protect that for us, and may we always cherish that, Lord. I pray for your guidance in this entire agenda tonight, the details of which you know even before we do. And we pray, Lord, that decisions made and words spoken tonight would all be for the betterment and for the best interests of the community as a whole. Father, I pray for this community. I pray for the people in this community that serve this community, Lord. All those who serve, especially those, Lord, our men and women who serve as police officers and firefighters, Lord. Thank you, Lord, a place where people will service that way. And I pray that we would never lack for people desiring to do those things. And finally, I pray for our community, that this will be a place, Lord, that people not only live, but they thrive. Father, I pray for our homes and our families, for churches, for businesses. And, Lord, we would be a place that loves one another. And, Father, I pray for revival, that people would turn to you and trust in you. By loving you more, we would love one another more. Thank you, Lord, for loving us and blessing us. And we lift all this up in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you. You may be seated. Roll call. Present.
Present.
Here.
Gibson.
Yeah.
Bill.
Hopper.
Lexi.
Here.
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 And we do have a floor. All we should have received copies of the minutes from our last regular meeting of February the 8th. Do I have a motion?
So here.
Motion by Mr. Lexi, second.
Second.
Just for Bates, I'm sorry. Any additions, deletions, or corrections? You're none, then roll call on the minutes.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Hilton.
Aye.
Minutes are approved of nine to zero. Reports, Corporation Council.
Yeah, I didn't send like monthly reports available on the SharePoint.
Are there any questions at this time? Anything from the controller?
Financial reports are all available online.
Alright, thank you. Any committee or board reports? Alright, here you none, then this is an opportunity for members of the audience to address the council concerning items that are on tonight's agenda. If you wish to do so, step to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and there is a five-minute time limit. Per first. Anyone? Alright, moving on. Ordnances and resolutions, notice of intent to consider ordinance number 23-08.
An ordinance amending the official zoning map adopted by reference Unified Development Ordinance Number 2029, proposed rezoning approximately 77.17 acres located at 3111 South State Road 135, sponsored by Gibson.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Ms. Gibson, second. Sorry, second to Mr. Lexi. Any presenters want to talk about this?
Good evening. President Campbell and Counselors, my name is Andy Barogu, I'm an attorney with Fager Draper, Middle and Reef, with offices at 670 East 96th Street in Indianapolis. I'm the attorney for the petitioner Avenue Oakley Capital LLC, petitioner for ordinance number 2308. With me to present a proposal tonight to landowner and co-developer Scott Weathers with Avenue Oakley Capital, the petitioner Chris Crossley and Chris Lake with Dell Design, our architects, and Kevin Sumner with White Engineers, our engineer for the project. Avenue Oakley Capital has the landowner filed this zone map change petition in order to develop a quality mixed-use development on 77 acres at 3111 South State Road 135 in Greenwood, named the Center Grove Park, P U B, P U D District. It is a proposed planned unit development as allowed under state law 3674-1500 in Section 100317 of Greenwood zoning ordinance. Our client will give you details next. We come before you with the plant commission 70 favorable recommendation for this project, along with the staff's favorable report, and after a lot of work with your department heads to refine our proposal for the best outcome for Greenwood. We respectfully request that you adopt our PUD ordinance, subject to the five conditions to which we agree, things like signs, trails, streets, and site design. As this proposed PUD applies with the city's comprehensive plan, and it meets all the statutory requirements set forth in Greenwood ordinance. Next, I'll introduce Scott Weathers with Avenue Oakley Capital to present details to the PUD project and is our point to show you this outstanding project. Scott?
Thank you, Andy. Thank you, Counselors. One, two. Time for people.
Good evening. To start off, I want to introduce that. I don't know if the. Start, I want to introduce who we are. We are a partnership between Lucian Investments, who is a retail commercial manager-owner with over 42 years of experience in the industry at Avenue Oakley Capital. It was a joint venture between Avenue Living and Oakley Group, who combined have over 44 years of experience owning, managing traditional multifamily communities with over 18,000 units under current management. Avenue Oakley started a brand of communities known as Leo. Leo is not an actual lion, but it's an acronym that we borrowed from the Indiana. Okay. I'll keep going. They were borrowed from the Indiana University football coach. Love each other, I'm sure you're aware of it. It's love each other, or for us, it's love your neighbor. We wanted to develop a type of community where you're getting back to those core values, where you know your neighbor, you know your community, you're part of the community, and you're loving each other. When we began working with all of Lucian Group, we quickly realized that our vision and desire to provide thoughtful, high-end developments in great communities such as Greenwood was at the core of both of our companies. That deal has remained at forefront as we design Center Grove Park. Okay, sorry. Our design teams, real quick, are the architecture and design, who is Avenue Oakley's programmatic architecture and land planner, and they go with us for all of our projects, as well as Dell Designs, who is a commercial multifamily architect working throughout the central Indiana area. Together, they bring high-quality sign and neighborhood building experience that we are lucky to have steering layout and look of our community. Our mission, Center Grove Park is to provide thoughtful and brochural rental residence and retail space and intersection value and luxury in top-room markets. That's just a fancy way of us saying that we want to provide a high-end residential communities with walkability and good quality retail areas that can be create that five-minute neighborhood where you can get to your coffee shop, you can get to your work within a walking distance of your community. A quick review of the PUD. It's, as mentioned, it's about 77 acres. 34 acres, which is, if you look at the screen, is going to be the north center, where you see most what looks like cottages. That's going to be approximately 317 cottage-style units, a clubhouse, exceeding 3,000 square feet and a pool of about 2,200 square feet. The Lucian Group's properties are going to consist of the lower right-hand corner, which is going to be up to 240 multi-story traditional multifamily units. And then the 11 acres of commercial, which is on the left side of the screen and close to the pond you see labeled C8A. Then in addition to that, we have about 25 acres of common area and community space. This includes 19 acres of open park space, as well as six acres of connectivity. And want to just reiterate, this area is going to be open to the public. This, we do not believe engaging our communities. We believe in being part of the overall community. And so, we wanted to provide something that is going to be a benefit to Greenwood as a whole. Where you're providing parking, where there will be trails that surround all of the ponds you see there and has connectivity throughout the area, so sidewalks on both sides, and as you can see, that east-west road will be connecting to where the future development is on, to the east of our property. To give a sense of what the community is going to look like, I'm going to primarily focus on the cottage. Sorry. No worries. I'm going to primarily focus on cottage, cottage portion of the development's design. And we went, we go with the Craftsman style, Craftsman style of design. It has been around since the 1900s. And then Jim and Joanna Gaines has made it very popular again, and it's going to be here long after we're gone. Our two groups, we're not merchant builders. We, when we find space that we want to build a community, we're looking at the long, looking for the long run. We're going to build, own, and manage the properties in perpetuity. I apologize. There it goes. Just real quick, this is an example of what a clubhouse will look like, as you can see, integrating a lot of that Craftsman style look. One-bedroom, two-bedroom cottage. A carriage house and two, larger two-bedroom cottage. Attached garage, whether two-bedroom or three-bedroom. And a three-bedroom townhouse or a three-bedroom twin-townhouse. That's our fancy way of saying duplex. And all of these components will have varying facades. What you see up here is not the only side. You'll see there's going to be varying components throughout, so we don't want to have not, you don't want to have something that looks like army barracks or row houses that look exactly the same. It's, in order to make it nice green state and street state and road, roadway, we're going to provide a variation throughout the community, and we're going to try to integrate that through the overall community, whether it's in a commercial space or vertical multifamilies. Have a homogeneous design aesthetic throughout. It's, we'll blur the line between the commercial cottage and traditional multifamily, so as you walk through a community, you're going to feel like you're in the same space, no matter where you are, on the entire property. And these are actual images of a development we recently completed in Huntsville, Alabama. And this is actually what our communities look like. This is what our street states look like. This, we have parking integrated onto the road, so we don't want to have too many large parking spots. We want to try to make it as pedestrian-friendly as possible. Just running through, just giving more ideas of the side components that we're going to integrate into the community. Then we obviously have, done that to the site plan in the presentation to see, but we'll have, not only in the common area A, B, and C, we're going to have pocket marked strength throughout the community, as well as providing a continuation of the walking path that is in the multifamily project that is just to our north, continuing that through our community. So there's connectivity outside, from outside of our development to the broader area. Class A amenities. Interior and out. And then, these are components and the inspiration that we're utilizing for the vertical portion of the multifamily. As you can see, we're integrating those Craftsman style design aesthetics there. It's really going to be a high-end look, class A apartment that's going to stand out in the overall community. As well as the commercial space. Like I said previously, we want to make the, want to blur the lines between each portion of development, so that, that way, it's integrated as homogeneous as one whole community and not three separate areas. Um. Why this development? Why this is different? Why this development? Design needs optionality. We're providing a varying array of housing types, whether it's cottage house that isn't seen, the fully rentable cottage south that isn't seen in this area right now, to the traditional multifamily. It will allow for people, whether they're young or older, to move into the community and possibly start in a traditional apartment complex, move into the cottage south community, and then if they had, then if they desire, they can look at a fee simple home within the broader Greenwood area. Vertical integration of services. Like I said, we're not a merchant builder. We are both, both groups, whether Lucian Group and Avenue Oakley. We have our own management company built in, so we will, we will be the owner, developer, builder, and manager of the property. So when the project's done, if you have a question, you can reach out to me, and I'll be able to provide an answer for you. It's not going to be someone else. The long view. We have no desire or plans to sell our, sell this product development when it's done. We look, when we look at crews, we're looking at a space that we want to stay. We want to be a part of the community. And so, when we build this, we're going to be owning it for the foreseeable future. And then delivering what people want. There has been a shift in housing type that people want, whether it's the younger generation or the older generation, there is a shift in what they're looking for in housing type. There, whether the house prices have gone up too much, and they can't afford the down payment at this time, or they don't, just don't want to be fixed into a fee simple home, this gives them the option, a varying option, that's different what you typically see in an area. Oh, there we go. And then, who lives here? Young singles and young couples. These are going to be your recent graduates. They have a good job. They're moving in, in the Greenwood area, and they're wanting to move here. They might not know exactly where they want to live. They might not have the equity to buy their home. This gives them an option to have either a traditional apartment style or the cottage style with four walls freedom of a home. That you have, your young, young families are single parents. This is our small subset of neighbors within the community, but these are going to be your parents, the, the, the young singles, that they might have just recently got married and moved, they moved to the area and wanted, and haven't yet found the forever home that they want to move into. And then, the mature adults are as, what I like to call the grandbaby chasers. These are either the grandparents of those new young families that are wanting to move or father grandchildren to where they're working. Or it could be, what we're really saying is people that have lived in an area. This gives them the option, with the way house prices have gone, they have the option to sell their home, capture all that equity, and get the amenities of a multifamily community with a varying housing type. It's not just going to be your traditional multifamily, but you have a varying housing type, so they can still have the comforts of a home, whether it's traditional multifamily or the cottage. And then they're all, it's supported by the retail component that's going to be on the western end, with walkability parks and various amenities throughout the community. And that's the end of my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you for your time.
Any questions?
The cottage will have private 317, and the vertical multifamily will have 240.
Any other questions?
The commercial lots in front. The idea is what will be designed.
The, design-wise?
Yeah.
It's going to integrate into the Craftsman style. There are going to be, there's going to be a masonry component. I believe we're at, we have put into the beauty 35% minimum masonry component. Big storefront windows with the hardy plank siding, so it integrates with the rest of the community.
And the units themselves, the cottage houses and the vertical units, those are all vinyl-free?
There, no vinyl is not allowed on any portion of the property.
Is that in the commitments?
It's in the beauty. That is one that we happily commit to with all of our developments.
Any other questions? Alright, thank you.
Just to clear up the for that amendment was that the PUD rezoning requires a higher caliber of a concept plan. So we did include some more detailed concept plans into the PUD. Really, the purpose of the PUD is to encourage a flexible development of land in order to promote the most appropriate use. Our comprehensive plan designated this area as a mixed-use area as the most desirable land use. That's exactly what they're providing here. You have the plant commission certification set you, you also do have staff support for this project. I'm here as well for any questions you might have about the PUD process.
Okay, I understand there's a couple amendments we need to make to this, is that correct?
Yes, there are. There was a typo with the word trails, the legal description updated to the most accurate acreage, and then the last one was the concept site plan. Instead of the more colorful artistic rendering that you would typically see in a zone map change, they have also included pretty detailed close-up plans showing the elevations where facilities will likely go, you know, from streetscapes down to each individual lot line. Now, a lot of that stuff is going to be ironed out for the master site plan approval, and while they go through their primary, secondary plat, but for the PUD, we do provide, we do require a higher level of a concept site plan to ensure that it's a feasible development.
Do you have a amendment we can read into here?
Alright, so I'll make this motion. Page one of the caption, the first word has clause to amend the acres from 77.17 to 77.548. Page two, second word has clause number two to correct trials to trails, exhibit A, insert concept plan at page 27. And I'd also, just so we're clear, number six, I'd like to add number six, it says vinyl should be provided. That way, for PC and F to us, something changes.
Alright, we have a motion to amend ordinance 2308. Do I have a second?
I do have a question on the vinyl. Would that be for things like window trains and other siding? Or is that just for the siding of the building?
So. The windows themselves can be vinyl windows, right?
Right, I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion. Do I have a second? Second to Mr. Lexi. Any discussion on amendment to ordinance 2308? You're going to end in roll call on the amendment to ordinance 2308.
Bates.
Aye.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hopper. Lexi. Hilton. And Morgan.
Aye.
Ordinance 2308 is amended on the vote and was denied to see for. Any further discussion on the council on ordinance 2308 as amended?
Something, Mr. Preston. I've made it pretty clear in my stance on public safety and adding more residential where it's not warranted. And this reason fits that. So instead of just saying the same things, I actually found something on the city's website, crime map. Knocks out burglaries, criminal mischief, suspicious persons, circumstances, theft, attempt. 2019, there were a little over 1,200. 2020, a little over 1,100. 2021, a little over 1,300. 2022, over 2,500. So it nearly doubled in the past year. That's alarming. Seeing how, that doesn't even take into account battery, assault, shootings, things like that. Our population's growing way faster than we can get police officers, firefighters. And, you know, we're doing that, and we have mileage caps on our police officers, where even if they want to go do it, you know, they might get penalized if they go over that number. So I just don't think this is a good move. I don't think it's good for current citizens and new citizens that have moved here to have public safety lacking.
Alright, thank you. Any other comments, questions on the council?
I have a question for Mr. Nelson.
Well, just one point of clarification. This would be in the White River Fire District, not Greenwood.
And that's fine, but the firefighters don't have mileage.
Should be in Greenwood.
I don't, I don't disagree with that. Yeah. Don't disagree.
Mr. Nelson, the staff report, was that unanimous in favor of this project?
It was unanimous from the plant commission 70, and then the staff, CES staff also filed a data report with our favorable recommendation, which was sent with the certification of the plant commission's vote.
Thank you.
Alright, any other comments or questions? Here you none, then roll call on ordinance 2308 as amended.
The Tom, Lai. Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Next.
Hopper.
Next.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hilton.
Next.
Williams.
Next.
And Ray.
Next.
Ordinance 2308, as amended, failed to pass on a vote of three to six. Thank you. First reading, Resolution 2305.
Resolution permitting interlocal agreement between the city of Greenwood and Pleasant Township, Johnson County, guarding fire protection, sponsored by Gibson.
Do I have a motion?
So here.
Motion by Ms. Gibson, second.
Second.
Second to Mr. Hopper.
Campbell, the record, record voice is our chief. Just to let everybody know, this is a yearly renewal of our interlocal agreement between Pleasant Township trustee and the city of Greenwood to provide fire protection for unincorporated areas of Pleasant Township. I'll be glad to answer any questions like that.
Right, any questions? Alright, any discussion on the council? You're going to end in roll call, Resolution 2305, first read.
Campbell.
I'm sorry. We do, we need, before we do that, we have a motion to amend.
There is a new Pleasant Township Board member avenue for who's been caught since.
It's, the motion by Mr. Hopper, second, by Mr. Bates. Any discussion on the amendment of Resolution 2305? You're going to end in roll call on the amendment to Resolution 2305.
Campbell.
Aye.
Gibson.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hilton.
Aye.
Bates. Tom.
The motion to amend Resolution 2305 passes on a vote of nine to zero. Now, roll call on Resolution 2305 as amended.
Gibson.
Aye.
Bill.
Aye.
Hopper.
Aye.
Lexi.
Aye.
Hilton.
Aye.
Ray.
Aye.
And Campbell.
Alright. Resolution 2305 as amended passes over nine to zero. Second reading, ordinance 2302.
An ordinance amending section 2-78 of Chapter 2 Article 8 of the municipal code of 1993, related to. overtime policy to address work weeks that include a paid holiday or holidays sponsored by Campbell.
A motion, motion by Mr. Hopper, second.
Sir.
I'm sorry. Who made the motion?
Mr. Bates.
Mr. Bates. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I had a second by Mr. Hopper then. Any discussion? I hear none in roll call, ordinance twenty-three oh two, second reading.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
The Trump. Hi. Campbell.
Hi.
Hi.
Resolution twenty-three oh two passes second reading nine zero, ordinance twenty-three oh two passes second reading nine zero. Ordinance twenty-three oh three.
An ordinance amending Greenwood Municipal Code nineteen ninety-three, chapter two, article eight, employee benefits to establish military leave sponsored by Campbell.
I have a motion, some motion by Mr. Bates, second by Mr. Hopper. Any discussion? Here in London, roll call, resolution, excuse me, ordinance twenty-three oh three, second reading.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Trump. I. Campbell.
Hi.
Gibson.
I.
And Hill.
Ordinance twenty-three oh three passes second reading nine zero, ordinance twenty-three oh four.
An ordinance amending Greenwood Fire Department merit system to prohibit commissioner ex parte communication concerning disciplinary matters sponsored by Hopper.
Another motion, motion by Mr. Hopper, second, second by Mr. Lexi, any discussion? Here in London, roll call, ordinance twenty-three oh four, second reading.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Trump. I. Campbell.
Hi.
Gibson.
I.
Hill.
Hi.
Hi. Ordinance twenty-three oh four passes second reading nine zero, ordinance twenty-three oh five.
An ordinance amending Greenwood Municipal Code nineteen ninety-three, chapter six, our twelve merit system for police departments to prohibit commissioner ex parte communication concerning disciplinary matters sponsored by Hopper.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second, sir, or Mr. Lexi, any discussion? Here in London, roll call, ordinance twenty-three oh five, second reading.
Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Trump. I. Campbell.
Hi.
Gibson.
I.
Hill. Hopper.
Hi.
And Lex.
Ordinance twenty-three oh five passes second reading nine to zero, resolution twenty-three oh two.
Your resolution adopting Indiana Code five dash twenty-three public-private agreements and taking certain other actions related there to be sponsored by Gibson.
A motion by Ms. Gibson, second, by Mr. Hopper, any discussion? Here in London, roll call, resolution twenty-three oh two, second reading.
Williams.
Hi.
Bates.
Hi.
Trump. I. Campbell.
Hi.
Gibson.
I.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Hi. Resolution twenty-three oh two passes second reading nine zero, resolution twenty-three oh three.
Your resolution approving certain amendments to the east side economic development area sponsored by Hopper.
We have a motion by Mr. Hopper, second. Second by Mr. Lexi, any discussion? Here in London, roll call, resolution twenty-three oh three, second reading.
Bates.
Hi.
Trump. I. Campbell.
Hi.
Gibson.
I.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
And Williams.
Hi. Resolution twenty-three oh three passes second reading nine zero, resolution twenty-three oh four.
Your resolution declaring certain area within the city of Greenwood an economic revitalization area and qualifying certain real property improvements for tax payment and setting the time and place for public hearing enters Hauser Inc. sponsored by Campbell and Hopper.
We have a motion by Mr. Hopper, second, second by Ms. Gibson, any discussion? Here in London, roll call, resolution twenty-three oh four, second reading.
I. Campbell.
Hi.
Gibson.
I.
Hill.
Hi.
Hopper.
Hi.
Lexi.
Hi.
Middleton.
Hi.
Williams.
Hi.
Hi.
Resolution twenty-three oh four passes second reading nine zero. New business introduction to new ordinance is resolutions, ordinance number twenty-three oh nine.
An ordinance providing for additional appropriation from the American Rescue Plan Coronavirus Recovery Fund with budget costation four four five four hundred and twenty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-three dollars for fire apparatus and security cameras sponsored by Bates Gibson. Public hearing scheduled March sixth, twenty twenty-three. Mr. Wright.
Good evening, Greg Wright, city controller. This, this ordinance covers two different items. The first one is related to fire apparatus. In twenty twenty-one, we ordered two pieces of apparatus, a ladder truck and a new engine. They were initially set to be delivered, I think, almost within twelve months, one was within eighteen months. In January of this year, we received a letter from the company that we're purchasing through called Seagrade that indicated that it was no longer economically feasible for them to build the trucks at the contract price. If we wanted to get them built anytime soon, it would be, it would require us to pay surcharge. Otherwise, they would hold on the bill until it was economically feasible. When we met with them, a lot of it is driven by increasing steel prices on their end, increasing prices for the engines and a lot of the parts that go into building these trucks. Their business model is that when they quote your price, they base that pricing on what they expect the increases to be by the time they get around to building your piece of apparatus based on their historical numbers. Obviously, when we went through this process, they were not anticipating what happened with all our supply chain problems. So now all of the costs have skyrocketed on that equipment. They did provide us a breakdown of all of the cost increase as far as the equipment goes, there is no increase associated with their labor or any of that. So that is all on their end, that's coming out of their piece of the, the contract, but they are asking for three hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and fourteen dollars to go to a surcharge to cover those two pieces of apparatus. We, in doing our due diligence on this, contacted some of their competitors to see what it would take to get these eight pieces of apparatus. The current lead time is minimum three-year lead time. Pricing is actually higher than what this would be on top of what we've already committed to. And in discussions with legal, basically, our options are if we want to get the vehicles, we're going to need to agree to the surcharge. So this additional appropriation would allow us to then start the process with them to get the contract for the surcharge. We'll take that before it works. And then once all of that is settled, they will give us delivery dates on the equipment if we commit to paying the surcharge. The other piece of this additional appropriation is related to security cameras. Our current security camera system is aging, particularly the cameras at the PD's training center. I think nearly all of them are down at this point, have been down within the last couple of weeks. We're going to need to put in a camera system at the parking garage. There is a hundred and twenty thousand in fact agreement that's already being covered by the developer. But the system we're looking at called the Vigilon would end up costing more for what we have laid out over there. We're also looking at upgrading the system at the airport and covering some additional areas. The one, one big plus to the new Vigilon system and the reason we're starting with what we are, we want to test it out because all of the school systems are using this security system. And should we find that it meets our needs, both the fire chief and the police chief would actually be able to access and get access to all of the school system cameras. So if there were an emergency, they would literally be able to pull up those cameras and see what's going on inside of the school buildings. So that's a big plus. All of the equipment is made in the USA. All of the current cameras were made in China and there are some security concerns around accessibility with those now as well according to the vote roll votes. So we're hoping that once we bring on these three sites, test the system and then it works out, then we'll probably be coming back and looking to expand that system across the rest of our security cameras and just replace what we have. But the biggest benefit, as I said, is we would be on the same system with the school systems so that the chiefs would actually be able to access that in case of emergency. And these are also higher quality security cameras. I can answer a question on either of those.
Any questions?
Greg, what's the, the total is four twenty-five, nine forty-three, what's the breakdown, so how much do you pay for the fires?
So the fire apparatus, the, the total between the two pieces is three hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and fourteen. The ladder is a little bit more than the engine. He, and then the rest is related to the three different sites, just over forty K is where the airport cameras, eighteen for the PD Training Center and then the remainder for the
All right, any other questions?
So Greg, do you anticipate that we might want to suspend the rules at the next meeting so that we can get that for it or?
I don't think we'll need to because we still have to do all of the contract stuff with legal, we'll negotiate contract stuff on, you know, with, with them and then taking that through board works. So we'll have that running concurrently and then we don't actually have to pay until it's delivered. So realistically, even though we may approve the funding, I don't suspect we will see the first piece of apparatus until June at the earliest, which will be the first time we need to pay anything. And then the other piece is probably the end of the quarter at the earliest based on our discussions with Seagrade.
I just didn't know if
Yeah, so since we, well, we both can't pay upfront and don't need to, so we don't have to push that too fast.
But I didn't know if you needed the approval.
Yeah, we'll be fine on that because once the contract's ready, they'll take that. And I don't actually need the approval on spending until we have a check, which, you know, that could
be a business.
Any other questions?
I have a quick question. So with the current contract on the equipment, there's nothing enforceable there, so what's going to make the next contract enforceable?
Well, so we do have a, a third piece of apparatus on order with them that we did question if there would be a surcharge on that. They said they don't foresee that at this time. But realistically, if we were to push the legal side of it, we haven't paid them anything at this point. So basically, even if we were to get something out of them, we can't force them to build the thing. Unless, you know, they're not going to build it unless they get paid. So we may have a legal fight that ends up with getting a couple of dollars and no ladder truck, no fire engines for three years because we have to deliver it three years. So that, that leaves us up a great gap.
So with the surcharge addition though, will it be?
They will commit to, yes, they will commit to delivering it. And, and the, the one piece of apparatus, they have got everything on their floor and ready to go. Basically, under their business model, if we weren't to agree to this, they would just put the stuff that could go on the next truck to somebody that is going to pay it and we'll wait until they decide they can afford to do ours or we'll keep waiting.
All right, any other questions? All right, thank you, Mr. Wright. This latest business, this is the second opportunity for members of the republic to address the council, this time concerning items not on your agenda. If you'd like to do so, please step to the podium and state your name and address for the record. All right, moving on then, Miss Lake's business from the council, I have a four items. One, I have received as of today, five thank you cards from the Greater Greenwood Community Band. And I'm going to read one of them. I've got two of them here tonight, if you all want to look at it. It says, "On behalf of the Greater Greenwood Community Band, I wanted to personally thank you for the support we've got from the city of Greenwood. Thank you for allowing me to present our twenty twenty-two recap as well. We are very energetic about the concerts we have planned for twenty twenty-three. And we would love it if you could attend one." They have the green site is greenwoodband.org and you can see the schedule on there and it says, "Thanks again, Ashley Pettit." All of these are, some of them have printed out labels, but all of these were very nice thank you cards handwritten and addressed to, I don't know, often just addressed to me, but the, the thank you notes was addressed to the council. So in all the years we've been doing this for the organizations we give money to, it's the first time I can remember just getting thank you cards. So I appreciated that, wanted to share that with you. One, the next thing, at our last meeting, we appointed three members to the meet and confer committee with our public safety personnel. Since then, I've gotten a letter from Mr. Pendleton wishing to resign and to nominate Ms. Petron to take his place. Since that's a council appointment, am I correct?
Yep.
Okay, and she is willing to do so. So we have a nomination of Ms. Petron, is there any other nominations? All right, here in London, all in favor of Ms. Petron serving in the meeting, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Thank you. The other thing, we discussed this, I believe, at our first council meeting of the year. But we have two of, we have one appointee to the Police Merit Commission and one appointee to the Fire Merit Board. The, are, that are up for renewal. Matt Holmes, on each of those boards, we have to nominate one Republican, one Democrat on the Greenwood.
Do you want to hear his lights?
If you're online, please mute your microphone, please. Our appointee to the Greenwood Fire Merit Board is Matt Holmes. Remember when we did this two years ago, we staggered the appointment, Steve Dot is a Republican nominee, Matt Holmes is a Democrat. Steve Dot's term was for four years, Matt Holmes is for two years and his term expires tomorrow. So he has indicated a willingness to continue a serving. And so I would have a motion to, most by Mr. Bates, to redominate Matt Holmes to the Greenwood Fire Merit Board, I have a second. Second by Ms. Gibson, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? And he's been reappointed for, this time for a four-year term and his term will expire in twenty twenty-seven. The other one is Mike Sherman, he's a Republican appointee to the Police Merit Commission. His term doesn't expire until March the ninth, but I told legal today, I'll probably forget before then, so we're going to take care of it tonight if that's all right with you. He is interested in continuing, so I would take it, entertain motion by Mr. Bates to reappoint Mike Sherman to the Police Merit Commission, I have a second. Second by Ms. Gibson, all in favor, say aye. Aye, all opposed? And his appointment is, he's reappointed, again, that's a four-year term. And that's all that I have. Any other thing from the council?
Yeah, Mr. President, I will request a, a report or something from sanitation departments since we have heard from that for quite a while. All this being going on since several years ago, I did hear that the site interceptor has been completed. I don't know what that necessarily entails, I know that entails obviously more homes and so forth and so on. It'd be nice to get some kind of updated report from the sanitation department.
All right.
I would request that from
We will work on that for one of our future meetings. Anything else from the council? All right, as you can see on the agenda, we do have some conflicts of interest, so.
Kevin Dillo, career leader for the street department for his spouse Rita Dillo, any interest he may have in her earnings is accounted payable clerk with the finance department.
Motion by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, approve you, Dan.
Rita Dillo, an accounts payable clerk for Greenwood Finance Department for her spouse Kevin Dillo, any interest he may have in earnings as a career leader with the street department.
Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Maureen Saltscaver, police department records clerk, first spouse Rex Saltscaver, for any interest she may have in his earnings as a located with the stormwater department.
Motion by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Prove you, Dan.
Rex Saltscaver, located with the stormwater department for her spouse Maureen Saltscaver, for any interest he may have in her earnings as a records clerk with the police department.
Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, prove you, Dan.
Kelly McGraw, administrative assistant of the Greenwood Fire Department for her spouse Kent Stevens, for any interest she may have in his earnings as a private department engineer with Greenwood Fire Department.
Motion by Mr. Hopper, second by Mr. Lexi, all in favor, say aye. Motion, Mr. Hopper, second, by Mr. Lexi, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Prove you down.
Kent Stevens, fire department engineer for the Greenwood Fire Department for her spouse Kelly McGraw for any interest he may have in her earnings as administrative assistant with the Greenwood Fire Department.
Motion by Mr. Hopper, second, by Mr. Lexi, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Prove you down.
Tracy Rumble, fire marshal for her spouse Michelle Rumble for any interest she may have in her earnings as a receptionist for code enforcement in the mayor's office.
Sorry, motion by Mr. Hopper, second, by Mr. Lexi, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Prove you down.
Becky Thompson, office manager and payroll administrator for her daughter Ashley Thompson for any interest she may have in her earnings as a part-time city employee.
Motion, Mr. Hopper, second, by Mr. Lexi, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Prove you down.
Ezra Hill, Greenwood Common Council member for any interest your conflict may have with railing construction company. City may do business with some time, time for, uh, water main repair.
Sorry, motion by Mr. Hopper, second, by Mr. Lexi, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Prove you down. Stay. One extension. One extension. All right, Mr. Phil. All right. Anything else? All right, anything from the corporation council?
Yes, sir.
Anything from the controller?
Nothing for me.
Anything from the mayor's office?
Nothing from the mayor's office.
We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.